Can I get a motion for certification?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board certify that to the best of each members knowledge, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Bushnell, that the school board certify that to the best of each members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry six zero.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas accept the superintendent's recommendation to deny the appeal for student S.T.U.E.A.P.P.E.A.L. 1415-02.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski, that the school board of the City of Manassas accepts superintendent's recommendation to deny the appeal for student S.T.U.E.A.P.P.E.A.L. 1415-02. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry six zero.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Sebeski.
I move that the school board of the City of Manassas accept the interview committee's recommendations to approve Gabrielle Torres and Faith Matic as the school board student liaisons for school year 2015-2016.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Sebeski, second by Mr. Bushnell, that the school board of the City of Manassas accepts the interview committee recommendation to approve Gabrielle Torres and Faith Matic as school board student liaisons for school year 2015-2016. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six zero. Mrs. Sebeski, did you want to?
Yes, I'd like to, if we could, recognize them, they're here tonight. So could Gabrielle and Faith come forward?
I know.
Didn't know you were gonna get your picture taken, did you? Welcome to our world. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Dr. McGurk. Mrs. Radford.
Good evening, Chairman DiMaria, other members of the board. Thank you, Dr. McGurk. I am here to present our superintendent's spotlights for this evening. First, we will begin by stating that next week, May 4th through the 8th, has been designated as Teacher Appreciation Week. Since 1984, National PTA has designated the first week in May as a special time to honor the men and women who lend their passion and skills to educating our children. Special recognitions are often held at the national, state, and local levels, like we do here in Manassas, to celebrate the outstanding contributions that teachers make. I would like to encourage all of us to take time to thank an educator next week, and let them know how much you appreciate them for all that they do. Tonight, however, I am very pleased to have members of the Manassas City Public Schools' Education Foundation with us, who continue to show their appreciation for MCPs teachers by providing financial support to assist them as they identify and develop solutions to educational challenges. This year, the foundation awarded more than $74,000 to this cause. STEM, or Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics funding comprises the majority of the education foundation grants. Together, Micron Technology Foundation and Lockheed Martin generously contributed more than $56,000 to the MCPs Education Foundation to be used specifically for STEM initiatives, such as First LEGO League at elementary schools, Vex Robotics at Mayfield Intermediate, robotics programs at Metz Middle School and Osborne High School, as well as summer engineering camps. The foundation awarded a total of 18 grants this year. Jenny Bartlett, President of the Foundation, Zuzanna Steen, Vice President, and Lisa Lewis, Executive Director of the Foundation, are here tonight. I'm gonna ask that they would come forward as we begin the presentation of our teachers. Okay. We're thankful that our foundation is here tonight to help us honor our educators. The following grants were awarded, as I call your names, please come forward. Melissa Neal from Central Office for Chinese Boxes. Bob Metowski, Assistant Principal at Metz Middle School for Saturday Learning Seminars. Leonard Newman from Metz Middle School for Metz Robotics Team, 2015-16 School Year. Jason Martin, who is being represented by Mr. Newman today, for Metz Middle School, Integrated Math Science II Field Experience. Sue Kelly from Jenny Dean Elementary for More Words I Use When I Write. Lisa Harlow from Hayden Elementary School for Take A Closer Look. Diana Hahn from Hayden Elementary School for LEGO Story Starter. Sandy Thompson from the Central Office for Backpack Smack Attack Program of Manassas. Pamela Belch from Hayden Elementary School for Tablets for Hayden. Arlene Higgins from Osborne High School for FRC Robotics. Additionally, we had Don Regenbogen from Dean for the Jenny Dean Dolphin Running Club. Heather Ball from Osborne High School for Saturday Learning Seminars. Dr. Sean Cofrin from Osborne for Youth Salute Leadership Council. Tracy Barry Owens and Carolyn McCormick from Weems for Assistive Technology Alternative Augmentative Program. Carol Murphy from the Central Office for Children's Engineering Summer Camp, and also for Elementary LEGO Robotics and Mayfield Vex Robotics Clubs. Christine Ty Papa from Jenny Dean for Mathletes, and Lisa Rowe for the Division for Brain Games Kart. Yes. On behalf of the Education Foundation, and of course, Manassas City Public Schools, we thank you for your creative ideas and creating these innovative programs for our students. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you. My lovely assistant will help me.
Come in for the picture.
Yeah. I know, she can.
President, she doesn't want to go in.
Gee. Remember when Tim was nice?
Yeah.
Cool.
If she holds his hand, you're all good.
You're gonna have some excitement.
He may benefit from some of these programs later.
Right there's why you do it.
There we go. Yeah, okay. Can you see?
Come here, bud.
He's done that before.
One more, one more, real quick, I'm sorry. Look this way.
Geez.
Okay, we got it, thank you. We do have one more, real quickly. National School Nurse Day is also next week, May 6th. It's a time to celebrate the specialty practice of school nursing. National Association of School Nurses applauds the contributions school nurses make every day to improve the safety, health, and academic success of all students. The theme this year, School Nurses: Caring for Others, Caring for Ourselves, is reflective of the significant role school nurses have in the health care in their school communities, as well as in modeling health and resiliency. That healthy children learn better is a simple truth, and school nurses work to remove barriers to learning. The MCPs nurses are an important part of our family who love and care for our children every day. Tonight, Ms. Sandy Thompson, who's the Supervisor of Administrative Services and oversees the Division's nursing program, is here to represent all nurses as we convey our appreciation to all of them. Thank you. Wait, just go ahead. Go ahead, Miss Nurse.
Yes, yes, we have the good pictures. Okay, yeah.
Stop it.
We were doing that.
Musical chairs. Great. Congratulations to all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports, academics. Ms. Williams.
My report, sir.
Thank you. Mrs. Sebeski, policy.
Yes, sir. Earlier this evening, the Policy Committee met to review Policy IGDA, new policy regarding student organizations. This is a common policy that is, most school divisions have that we do not have. It's been added to the discussion agenda for tonight, and will follow on the consent agenda at our next meeting as per typical direction.
Thank you.
And we meet again on Tuesday, the 5th, at Central Office at 11:00 a.m., and all the Policy Committee members tonight have a book for review for that meeting.
Do I get one of those?
No, you don't have the committee.
Oh, that's too bad. Education support.
The committee has not had a meeting, sir, but I think everyone who drives through Old Town can notice there's a lot of dirt being moved right now, and nothing to do with the committee, but Mrs. Benner's here, and there's some really cool new signs over at Osborne High School, so.
Thank you, sir. And they are cool. And I think she's proud of them. Good. Finance. Mr. Bushnell?
The Finance Committee met earlier today. We approved a new format for CIP report that Mr. Hawkins has presented to us, and that will be issued to all school board members, along with the quarterly updates that we receive from the Finance Department. We also took an item which I will talk about during, we took an action which I will talk about during the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Anything on personnel?
Personnel Committee has a meeting on the 11th of May.
Board members comments. Mrs. Kiefer, we'll start with you.
No comments.
Miss Spall, do you have anything?
Well, since Deandre's not here tonight, I'll give you the update. It is 41 days till graduation.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Sebeski.
No report. No comments.
Mr. Williams.
I'll be brief. I was out of town this past weekend, but I heard that prom and after prom went spectacularly well, and I see Ms. Jill Spall here, who's instrumental in that, so thank you for all the work you've done. I've heard a couple of students online say they had a good time, so if they had a good time, that's really been a good job, so thank you very much. Congratulations to Gabrielle and Faith for their selection, and to all the candidates. I know they did a great job. And finally, I was just gonna make one comment, but I made the other comments as well. My heart particularly goes out to Mr. Apt and his family, and made them all very well, and dealing with that situation, and also seeing that friend of mine, who can be grandfather again, I was thinking this weekend about children and life, and this, not only the sanctity of life, but the importance of life, why we celebrate children so much, why we do what we do. And I came across a quote which kind of encompasses why we feel the way we do when things happen to our children, and it's pretty short, and it says simply, "Making the decision to have a child is momentous; it is to decide forever, to have your heart go walking around outside your body." And I think that kind of explains why we feel the way we feel about our children, and why you all do what you do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bushnell?
This has been a very touching day for all of us, and I just want Jeff and Lisa Apt to know that our hearts are with them, and we all send major hugs their way.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht?
It really is kind of a very solemn time, and I appreciate Mr. Bushnell and Mr. Williams' comments, and especially the quote, because as Mr. Bushnell just knows, he's a grandfather again. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
There's a reason why we have children, is to bring joy, and certainly locally last Thursday, and to watch the events unfolding last night in Baltimore, just violence does not accomplish anything, and if there's a message out there in solemnness with our children, our grandchildren, our friends, it's, let's work constructively and positively for a better good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams, thank you very much for your comments. Saves me from having to do that. Make sure you love your kids, and you love each other. You never know. You never know. And each other, too. And if you've got an argument, end it. Citizens comments.
You wanna talk about the economic development thing we did? I spent a whole day with you, you don't wanna say?
Okay. Thanks.
It's positive, too.
Well, I was just trying to get through it. And this has been so touching to us, Mrs. Sebeski couldn't make comments. I mean, I'm gonna have to pass that on to Jeff. I mean, that's powerful. On Saturday, Mr. Albrecht and I, and what, 25 of our closest friends, attended the Economic Development Summit at the Candy Factory. We had a lot of city leaders there, a lot of business leaders, staff was there from the city. I believe we made some headway. We got some things started, some thoughts came out. A lot of discussion about the schools, and how the schools need to improve in order for the city to improve, and it became pretty much a consensus, in my mind at least, that the, the schools do need to improve, always. If we don't improve, we're going backwards. But the consensus is that what needs to happen first is a perception of our schools and of our crime. Our schools are great. People just don't know it. People don't wanna hear it. Our staff, our superintendent, our teachers, our kids, our parents are doing wonderful, wonderful things. We're very proud of them, and it became pretty much the consensus that we need to change the perception. Schools still have to continue to improve. Crime rate still needs to go down, always, but our crime rate is very, very low. The perception of the crime in the city is wrong. The perception of our schools in the city and outside of our city is wrong. And that, that came out of the Economic Development Summit, and it was very rewarding to me at least, to know that it wasn't just school leaders that understand that our schools are great, and our people are great, and our kids are great. We just need to get the word out there. Anything else on that, sir?
No, I think the only other message that I thought was interesting is we looked at, it is more redevelopment than development, there's not that much land left in the city, we all know that. But a common theme also was, we have to invest in ourselves, and that may require spending money. And that was across the board, with building equality of lives, community services, everything, so.
And in the discussion we were having amongst everybody, every time Mr. Albrecht opened his mouth, I was really proud he was on my side. All right. Are there any citizens that would like to speak? I'm not gonna waste your time with a three-minute reading here, then. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified, and then I will have a point of discussion.
Gotcha.
Once it's seconded.
Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mrs. Sebeski, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. Any discussion, Mr. Bushnell?
Yes, sir. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening, we voted unanimously to approve the transfer of $53,051 from the CIP contingency area to the actual Metz Ball Field Improvement Project for site improvements. I wanted to be transparent and let you know that the Finance Committee had unanimously approved it, and that it is on the consent agenda as a transfer.
Thank you, sir. It's good to know what was modified. Any other discussion? Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mrs. Sebeski, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six zero.
That's off.
That's off?
Yep.
That's off. So we're going to policies. Mrs. Sebeski.
Student Code of Conduct.
Mrs. Sebeski, hold your horses.
E, we're on E.
We're on E. Student Code of Conduct.
Mr. Collins?
Mr. Chair, I thought that's what I'm gonna tell you, that that's all we needed to talk.
Mr. Collins?
Oh, this could be a while, I was bringing a big briefcase.
Members of the school board, Dr. McGurk, I'm here this evening to review with you the proposed changes to the Student Code of Conduct for the 15-16 school year. We should have the code available to you in strike-through, read for changes, and a summary of the proposed changes as well. The entire proposed code has been reviewed by our attorney. There are some minor grammatical changes throughout the code. We've eliminated some borders around legal references. We've eliminated some legal references that are not required, and we've updated the legal references in the code that are required. All school board policy references have been updated, and incorrect references have been deleted. The content of some code sections has been rearranged without changed content. We propose reducing the number of conduct violations that mandate out-of-school suspension, and the elimination of most mandatory recommendations for expulsion, and this impacts code sections concerning drugs, sexual misconduct, and weapons. Starting with the table of contents, you'll note that we've added and changed the title of Section Number Three, Bullying and Hazing. This is at the advice of our attorney. On the introduction, page four, you'll see minor grammatical change in the first sentence. Change of disciplinary action, page five. We've changed this to reflect that an administrator's authority to suspend is no longer unconditional, but must be in accordance with policies and regulations. Specifically, if a 10-day suspension is not mandated by the code, the school administrator must obtain the approval of the Director of Student and Administrative Support Services or his designee to suspend a student beyond five school days. We've made changes to incorporate language consistent with the implementation of positive behavioral intervention and supports, and the practice of progressive discipline, and due process. We've moved the warning concerning reimbursement for lost breakage or destruction of property from Section Two, bomb threats, faults, fire alarms, and arson, to this range of disciplinary action upon the advice of our attorney. And we have established the mandate that all students and their parent guardian will meet with a school counselor upon return to school from a short-term suspension to review the conduct infraction, and to develop a plan for improving the student's behavior, unless the school principal or his designee determines that readmission without a parent conference is appropriate for the student. Section Number Two, bomb threats, false fire alarms, arson, page six, we deleted the warning, and that's the one that we moved into the range of disciplinary action. On page seven, bullying and hazing, you'll see the addition of "and other similar conduct." Section Five, computer data and equipment, on page eight, again, just minor changes to language, rearrangement of content upon the advice of our attorney. Section Eight, dress, page 10, again, just minor changes to language, rearrangement of content, again, upon the advice of our attorney. Section Nine, drugs, starting on page 10, you'll see that we've updated the legal reference, we've eliminated the black box border around the legal reference. We make reference to Virginia Code, Section 1822651, which defines drug paraphernalia. On page 11, we incorporate our new consequences for violations. Under the influence and possession of paraphernalia are no longer 10-day suspensions. The consequence for possession changes to up to 10-day suspension with mandatory intervention. Distribution will require a 10-day suspension and recommendation for expulsion. Reference to subsequent violations deleted, as each violation will be disposed of within the context of progressive discipline. We make clear that students recommended for long-term suspension and expulsion following a hearing by the office of the superintendent or the school board will participate in mandatory intervention prior to any eventual return to school. And on page 12, we add nutritional supplements to possible exceptions to drug violations. Section 10, electronic equipment and communication devices, page 12. We just update our terminology there. And in keeping with the incorporation of these technologies into the learning process, we emphasize that the use must be authorized. Section 20, sexual misconduct, page 16. We delete the requirement that a subsequent violation result in a 10-day suspension and a recommendation for long-term suspension or expulsion, and that we believe that the prior paragraph makes clear that the violation is serious, and that administrators will consider the possibility of such a recommendation. Page 17, Section Number 23, transportation, again, just incorporating language upon the advice of our attorney. Section Number 25, weapons, dangerous objects, starting on page 18. We delete the black box legal reference, as there is no requirement to have this in the code, and no mandated zero tolerance. We delete review of violations of the Gun Free Schools Act, and change that language to review of weapons violations. Some content is moved without change, specifically the note concerning being an accessory to a violation. It remains, we just moved it. On page 18, we delete reference to subsequent violations for weapons, and on page 19, we delete second violation for dangerous objects look-alike weapons. Again, each violation will be disposed of within the context of progressive discipline. And this is similar to the changes we proposed under the drug section. On page 19, in the list of possible dangerous objects, we delete reference- On page 19, in the list of possible dangerous objects, we delete reference to any knife having a metal blade of less than three inches. Administrators will evaluate every object and will deem an object a weapon if appropriate. And will confer with the Executive Director of Student and Administrative Support Services or his designee, should there be a question. We underline brandishing. We needed to pull that out, make it a little bit easier to see for administrators as they reference the code. The consequences list mandatory intervention prior to any return to school regardless of the ultimate disciplinary action. In suspension procedures, page 20, we incorporate language from existing regulation, conditioning the administrator's authority to suspend a student for 10 days. We include the superintendent's designee when imposing long-term suspensions in accordance with existing long-term suspension And that's it.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
No.
I'd like to express a concern, I guess.
Sir?
While I agree and understand the research that talks about the negative impacts of exclusionary discipline, as I read the proposed Student Conduct Code, it tends to be a document that talks about progressive discipline and about individual choices. But I'd like there to be somewhere, one sentence, someplace, that says there are certain things that will result in expulsions. There are certain things that I believe violate the safety of schools, that pose a risk to us, and that we have a responsibility for the good of all students from time to time to remove a student from the school system. That isn't reflected in this any longer. It seems to have all been removed, and I'm a little concerned about that. I'm not in favor of most expulsions, but I think from time to time, we need to have something somewhere that says for certain actions, the expulsion is a consequence that won't be progressively arrived at, that doesn't get there after you've progressed to it. There are certain incidents that require it, require it of us, to take an action to protect our staff and our students. And I don't see that the proposed draft code says that anywhere. It's a draft, so that's my input.
Thank you. Yeah, there's a couple places I found that show that they would be subject to expulsion.
Page 24 is supposed to expulsion.
It does, but...
Right, distribution. Sir?
Drug distribution.
Drug distribution would require a recommendation for expulsion, yes, sir.
Yeah, page 11.
Brandishing would require a recommendation for expulsion.
Where's the brandishing one?
Brandishing is under weapons, page 18. Probably page 19. Page 19.
I should address your concern. Do you want me to say anything as to what we're doing here and why we did what we did?
Sure.
Okay, so the reason that the changes have been made is because the more specific you become, the more you tie your hands to what is it, what you can or cannot do based on what has occurred. For instance, something that happens with a kindergarten student as opposed to something that happens with an 18-year-old. So, under expulsion on page 24, it says a student may be expelled from attendance at Manassas City Public Schools for sufficient cause. It gives us much more leverage in handling those things for which we deem a student dangerous to other students or the effective functions of our school because when we label specific actions that require expulsion, we ultimately can also tie our hands for other things for which may be just as grave under a different circumstance that we don't have listed.
And I understand that point quite well. My concern is that the only discipline that the School Board can take is we do expulsion and long-term suspension. But you could also interpret the same document to say that everything's going to be handled progressively and that maybe nothing merits that. I believe that from time to time, there are specific things that do merit that. And I wouldn't begin to list what they all are, but I don't know that having it on page 24 addresses that. I would feel better if somewhere on the first page, that there was just a sentence that said something about from time to time, the serious nature of an event may require this, may suggest to the superintendent that the superintendent should present an expulsion recommendation to the School Board. I don't think you have to say what they all are, but I'd like there to be something on the first page that says that is a potential consequence. It doesn't have to happen progressively as a result of increasing activity. And we've been precluded from punishing people for doing things that were inappropriate before because it wasn't spelled out correctly. And the only rights that the School Board has as an entity to protect the safety of students under discipline is to expel. And those are rights that are ours legally. I'd like us to at least be mentioned somewhere that it might happen.
You will find a reference similar to that on page 14, under inappropriate school conduct.
Yeah.
Extremely inappropriate behavior will result in serious disciplinary consequences and may constitute a violation of other sections of the Student Code of Conduct. It approaches it, at least. So you do find those types of comments, certainly we can incorporate something into the introduction.
I just like a line in there somewhere that says that from time to time, there may be events that require the superintendent to suggest expulsion. I don't want to list what they all are. I'd just like it to be on the first page, not on page 24 or 14.
Okay, in the introduction, what we will do, Mr. Collins?
Wait, before what we would do. Is everybody okay with that? I am, but I just want to make sure that it's, that this is a board recommendation, Mr. Bushnell.
The Academic Committee reviewed this. And first, thank you to Mr. Collins and Mr. App for all the hard work they did on this and Dr. McGurk. The reason why we changed the way we did was noted earlier. They're trying to recommend certain changes. And Dr. McGurk is exactly right. You don't want to preclude yourself from charging someone by being too specific because kids, you know, have, I want to say devious minds, but kids are creative, so you don't want to constrain yourself. I do understand Mr. Bushnell's point, and I think Dr. McGurk is gonna suggest maybe add a sentence addressing that in the first page. But not a thing I do think we have is sufficient, but I have no problem with adding on something to it.
So I was going to suggest the second paragraph on page four, that we can reword that. And should I take it back to the, should we bring it back to Academic Committee? Or how do we bring that back for further consideration?
Well, this is the draft, so you just bring it back to us for final approval.
Okay, during the final approval?
Right.
Because we've got to get this...
Have Carrie send it to...
There you go. Electronically send it to us so we don't have to...
I would put down paragraph number five, the fifth paragraph down in the introduction.
Okay, so we will talk about this and work together and get something with Mrs. Clapper and get it out to the board members. It's really important that we, if you see anything else, that you refer it to us because the high school and the schools need to get this in their handbooks. And we're running out of daylight.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Bushnell, does that paragraph not meet what you were looking for?
I was looking for something a little bit, in that paragraph where the last sentence, where the last words of a sentence.
Right.
I'd like some reference to just the fact that the School Board has a role here.
Mr. Chair. I think I agree largely with Mr. Bushnell, and that is, it's a very difficult thing. And the worst thing we do is, whether it's suspension or expulsion, take a child out of the academic environment that probably needs it the most. But the balance on the other side of that is children who are there that are totally disruptive to other students, are harmful to themselves, other students, and the staff. And to the level that we can right up front say, there's a range of things up to and including denying you a free and appropriate education in accordance with the Code of Virginia. No one ever reads the 27th page. People read the first and second paragraph and skim-read everything else. I'd almost go to the first paragraph, last sentence, and say the ultimate consequence of failing to comply with the Code of Conduct is expulsion in accordance with the law.
I can agree with that. Okay. If you guys can figure that out and put it in better words than Mr. Albrecht came up with, and send that out to us so that we can take a look at it before final approval. Everybody good with that?
In the introduction.
Yes.
The introduction. Yeah, that's what I meant.
Before paragraph five.
I'm way up here.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Collins. We appreciate it.
I actually, one question, maybe Mr. Williams can answer this for me. As the trend has moved away from specificity, and does 14, inappropriate school conduct, is that, is there somewhere, someplace, that it gives us the capability to provide sanctions for actions that are not specifically outlined here? If somebody does something, from time to time, kids have thought of things that aren't covered here, and we have not been able to do any punishment if we've been so specific that it wasn't against the rules. Is there someplace, somewhere, that gives the administration the capability to punish someone for something that is not specifically outlined?
And any other bad behavior?
I'm just...
Those words exist in the code, sir. I know they do. I'm just having trouble finding them right this minute. But I've read them several times, yeah.
I think you'll recall, though, when we've had our hands tied previously, because it wasn't specifically outlawed in the code, I just want to give the administration the ability to deal with things that they find to be unacceptable that maybe isn't specifically outlined.
I think 14, you mentioned, it says, for instance, any act considered inappropriate. So I believe that an administrator thought it was inappropriate, they could bring it forth, and we'd have to decide whether that was true or not.
But it also says disrespectful, inappropriate, probably, is that the second paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure you have, that the administration has the ability. New things happen all the time. There are new devices, there are new electronic cigarettes, there are new drugs. And just because it, if it's wrong, it's wrong. Just because it's not specified, it's still wrong. I'm not trying to be an old fudgedaddy here.
You don't have to try. But we all agree.
We can get that taken care of.
You can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Everybody good? Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Alston, thank you very much for being here. Our liaison to the School Board from the Council. Thank you, sir. Now we can go to policies, correct?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Sebeski.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. The Policy Committee reviewed IGDA student organizations. It's in draft form. It was given out to the Policy Committee. Having received no comments from anyone on, and we had no discuss, real discussion, we recommend approval of this. It's gonna be sent to everybody for review, and next time it'll be on the consent agenda for...
Since student organizations, thank you, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Since the student organizations, and they're predominantly at the high school, of our student liaisons looked at it, I mean...
No, but I'll be happy to share it with Mrs. Spall and get her input.
Miss Spall.
Miss Spall. Sorry, Mrs. Spall is here as well. But I will share with Ms. Spall to see if she has any input on it.
You've got some homework to do. Finals. Any other questions for Mrs. Sebeski?
That's why we have you.
Now, I missed the Code of Conduct. I haven't missed anything else, have I?
No.
Sir? Nope.
And for adjournment?
Motion by Mrs. Sebeski, second by Mr. Albrecht for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, six-zero. Thank you all.